Call the meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. All members are present. Approval of the agenda. We have updated agenda. We have an addition of, under Reports and Presentations, EDA report. And then, under Action Items, 7I, approve application for permit for ice oval races. And then, under Consent Agenda, we have 10C, application for exempt permit Center Matt Youth Wrestling Club. Is there any other changes? Council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shallen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, the December 15th, 2021 regular meeting. Have them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing. Do I have a motion to approve the December 15th regular meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. This brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. We'll move on to Reports, Presentations. Park Board Report?
There we go. Is that on?
Yes.
Okay. So, the Park Board met today in regular session. It was their first meeting of the year. They did adopt their bylaws with one change. They delayed collection of officers till the next meeting, pending a change in membership on the board. And they had a couple, they did have their Park, Public Works Report on the park-related activities. And they had a couple of requests regarding the campground. One was a request for additional discounts in the campground. And another one was a request to do payment plan like we used to do. And the Park Board recommended against both of those changes. They felt like the discount wasn't warranted due to our already low rates. And we really have only had one request to go back to the payment. And the full payment on reservation has been working out good. So, no changes there. So, I have no recommendations for the council tonight from the Park Board.
Any questions, concerns? Okay. EDA report?
So, the EDA also met in regular session today at noon. They did elect their officers for 2022. Kevin Upoff is president, Joe Fickman, vice president, and Jeanne Martha Haller is secretary. Sock Center Opportunity says their next meeting won't be until April, so they won't have an updated report. They did get their update on the industrial park project and also the progress reports on the lot sales. Those progress reports are in your informational items later tonight. And also, they discussed what their role might be in proceeding with the housing development here in town. And also, they were invited to the WSCEO Program Breakfast, January 14th. And I also forwarded that invitation to the city council. So, if anybody wants to attend that, just please RSVP to them so they know how many people will be coming. And I have no actions tonight.
Okay. Questions, comments? Then we'll move right into our action items. 7A, Resolution Number 2022-01, adopting rules of order for council meetings.
So, this is the resolution you have in front of you tonight. The changes are highlighted in yellow. I can read through all of the appointments if you like, or I can just do the changes. Warren, do you want me to read them all, or do you want to read them all?
Well, this here is the rules of order, not the adopting.
I skipped to B, I'm sorry. Let's go there first. So, on the rules of order, each year, we must conduct an annual meeting. So, this is your annual meeting of the year. This is the first regular meeting. And at this meeting, you must adopt rules of order. And at a minimum, appoint the official newspaper, the acting mayor, and the depository. So, those things are on your resolution that you have. So, the first is to adopt the rules of order. I do have a resolution in there that has no changes from prior year. If you wish to make some changes for the rules of order, now is the time to do so.
Comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-01.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion by Shallen.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. 7B, Resolution Number 2022-02, appointing council members to serve on various boards and commissions and also making annual appointments. That one there, I'll just read it through. That way, it's part of the record, if that's okay. Acting mayor will remain Heidi. The engineer would be Stan Tech. City attorney is Pemberton Law. Medical director is Dr. Mary Thomas. HRA board liaison, instead of Shallen, it will now be Diane. Park Board, instead of myself, will be now Shallen. Planning Commission will be myself. EDA will be Heidi and Joe. Senior Center Liaison will be Diane. Airport Commission will be Shallen. CBB Board will be Shallen instead of Diane. Policy Planning Committee will be Joe. And I will be taking Diane's spot on that committee.
My spot.
Or Shallen's spot, I'm sorry. On the policy and planning, so it'll be Joe and me on that committee. Operations Committee will remain Shallen and Diane. Personnel Finance Committee will be myself and Heidi. The official newspaper is Sock Center Herald. Depositories will be Minnesota National Bank, First State Bank, Central Minnesota Credit Union, the 4M Fund, MultiBank Securities, and Bremer Bank. The official signatories will be Vicki Willer, Jaclyn Kirkoff, and myself. Fire Chief is Steve Moritz. First Assistant, Jeff Bromenschankel. Second Assistant, Ben Klink. Secretary Treasurer, Mike Anderson. And Training Safety Officer, Wayne Sense. Is there anyone that wants to make any changes or requests at this time on those positions? I didn't hear anything from anybody, and those were the only two changes that I had thought we would make the switch on, get Shallen a little more diversified in different areas, so. Okay. If I don't have anybody else wanting to change and they're okay with it, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-02, adopting the annual appointments?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Diane. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shallen. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. 7C, Approve Resolution 2022-03, establishing procedures relating to compliance with IRS.
So, this has to do with the 2022 street project that we're looking at doing. If we want to proceed with the project with the issuance of bonds and we want to reimburse ourselves with costs that we've incurred prior to the issuance of bonds, then we must declare our intent to do so. And that's what this resolution is. At this time, if we foresee the issuance of bonds and award the bid for 2022 project, we could potentially not actually issue the bond until July or August, when the major expenses and the bills will come through. So, at that point, we'll already incurred quite a bit. So, I would imagine our intent would be to reimburse ourselves with issuance of those bonds. And this resolution that you have in your packet is actually the IRS resolution that declares our intent to do so. I have contacted our bond consul, and he has run a couple scenarios, what a bond issue would look like and what a levy would look like, so that he will know that information prior to going forward with the project. We potentially would be looking at those plans and specs and going to bid the end of this month. So, this is some information that you're going to want to know because of building pact or levy, because it's a pretty significant bond. But the interest rate is very favorable. So, we'll look at a couple different options there. But what I'm just looking for tonight is the adoption of Resolution 2022-03, establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Comments, questions?
Is this because of the timeline of when we decided to do the project? Because normally, we bonded before we've had to. I don't remember, I don't recall having a project that we've had to have the IRS this particular circumstance.
No, we normally would do this bond, this intent really early in the year. But when we did the 2018 project, we did the same thing.
Okay.
Because we've already incurred engineering costs. Now, if we were going to bond right away before we incurred construction costs and just absorbed the engineering, that's an option that we can do. But in this situation here, there's going to be significant engineering even before we get to that point. So, that's why I'm proposing this resolution to reimburse ourselves for expenses.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
You said that there were a few potential options, right, that they would come with at that time when it relates to the...
What I'll have for you is, and what's going to make the most impact to you is probably going to be what kind of a levy are we looking at?
Okay.
Because that's going to be kind of impactful to the city. And it could impact whether or not you even want to proceed with the project. So, that is why I want to have that information for you at that meeting.
Okay. Doing this doesn't set us into, this just gives the opportunity to do it if, should we?
Correct.
Just an opportunity to pay ourselves back for any costs.
Okay.
Is there any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-03?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. 7D, Appoint Part-Time Officer.
So, our department, as you know, we actively seek qualified individuals for our part-time officer roster, which they use to cover shifts for vacations and sick time and that type of thing. Brian Thorsted, who previously worked on a part-time basis prior to taking a full-time job in another county, has since taken a position with Todd County and moved back to Sock Center. And so, we are requesting that Thorsted be added to our part-time roster. The chief has talked to the sheriff up there, and they're okay with him doing that. So, he will continue to be a full-time deputy at Todd County, and he'll be a part-time officer here with the city of Sock Center. So, that's what we're looking to do, is approve the appointment of Brian Thorsted to the police department part-time roster.
Questions, concerns?
So, because he was already employed, does this, have to do any background checks or anything like that, or is it...
Well, we still run all the updated.
Okay.
And one of the pluses, since he worked for us before, he knows the city and how this department does things, so.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Thorsted?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Shallen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Approve Resolution 2022-04, awarding bid for flooring, Fire Department.
The Fire Department budgeted for the refinishing of the flooring in the department with an epoxy finish. They budgeted $75,000. The bids were sought for the work. We received two bids. We got from Valley Lake Flooring Company for $60,809, and that is in your packet, as well as Creative Coatings Inc. for $63,230,30. And the one, the one bid, the creative coatings, you have to look at that, you have to add for the double flake broadcast. So, that's why when you look at the estimate, it doesn't look like I just mentioned. But that's, that is the total. So, in addition to this epoxy finish in the main level, by another vendor, new rubber matting will be installed in the upper-level fitness center. That's under a separate contract. But I just wanted you to be aware that that's in addition to the epoxy flooring that they're looking at doing. So, what we're looking tonight is to approve Resolution 20204, awarding the bid for the Fire Department Epoxy Flooring System.
Questions, concerns? How long are they expecting that to take, to do?
How long does it take to actually apply?
Yeah.
It's a two-step process. They'll have, I believe they're going to do like half the floor and then switch.
Okay. I was just wondering where we were putting the fire trucks when the floor was getting done. So, rather than sitting outside.
Maybe Joe was the answer to that question. It's not on that committee.
You know, in the meantime, they'd be sitting outside.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. That's, I don't have a problem with doing the floors, just...
Well, when is the intended installation?
This summer.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not too terrible, then.
No. I'm just thinking of sitting outside with no one watching it, even though it is next to the police station. Doesn't mean that somebody might, you know...
It says two phases, two 70 phases. So, phase one is seven days, and then phase two is seven days.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Looks like the low bid would be Valley Lake Flooring. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 202204, awarding the bid for the Fire Department Epoxy Flooring System to Valley Lake Flooring?
Motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Diane, second by Heidi. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor.
I'll abstain.
Oh, abstain? Okay. Four in favor, none against, one abstention. 7F, Approve Resolution 2022-05, awarding bid for flooring, Senior Center.
So, the Senior Center also has had new carpeting in their budget for many years. The original carpet has been in there since 96, so it's very well-worn. We got two separate quotes. One from Henon Flooring Covering for $47,7404, and the other from Carpet One Floor &amp; Home for $8,069,95. The Senior Center Board met, and they recommend the city proceed with the quote from Henon Floor Covering Inc., and that is Resolution 22-05.
Questions, comments?
It does say in the Henon one that there's no furniture moving, so staff, somebody from the staff, do that, or...
The public works will move the furniture.
Okay.
I don't know if they know that yet, but.
Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 202205?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Joe. Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. 7G, Approve Change Order Number 2, Aerosmith Platte 3, Mark Lee Excavating.
This change order is for the Interpretive Center project. The change order is to cover costs of connecting existing but not previously identified storm sewer in the northwest corner of the parcel into the new storm sewer system. And the total cost of the change order is $15,073. And I did include the actual, the change order in the packet. It's a little blurry, but you can see the different pieces that they had to purchase and connect into the existing, into the new system. So, this will take from the initial contract with change order one and change order two. The revised total contract is $489,40512. The total amount paid to Mark Lee to date has been $458,123. So, we have a little bit of funding there that has not been paid yet, which includes both retainage and also, it includes work that hasn't been done yet that needs to be done next year, the second lift of the paving that goes into that driveway area. So, what we're looking to do here is to approve change order number two with Mark Lee Excavating for the additional storm sewer connection.
Questions, comments?
I just have a question on the mobilization within the change order, $1,400 fee for that. I mean, we paid a $25,000 in the original contract. I mean, weren't they on the site? Why do we need to mobilize them again?
You know, that's probably a question for the city engineer.
Shouldn't cost $1,400 to cross the parking lot.
Um, being the council, Mr. Mayor, I actually, I don't know the timing of when this storm sewer got put in. It would have been done by Molliter Excavating, the subcontractor. They likely, perhaps, were gone and had to come back. But I can, I can definitely find out for you on that.
Okay.
We could, well, we could pay this now, and then if he finds out that there was, that shouldn't have been on there, we'll just withhold it from the next payment if we want to.
Yeah, this doesn't, the change order is just contractual. There's no payment being made here.
Well, correct. But if we contractually agree to that $1,400, I mean, aren't we obligating ourselves to that payment?
Right.
No. So, if we install, so...
But once they do the rest of the work and they send us their final bill, are we going to pull out $1,400 we contractually agreed to?
So, these are, that would be negotiated with the next pay request, payment for that.
So, the motion could possibly just include with a negotiated question mark of the mobilization line item?
If we find out that it's not justified, yes.
Okay. So, basically, we're just approving the change order the way it's laid out. But that's all negotiable when it comes to the pay request.
It's all been installed, and I believe, I believe these are final price, final, you know, quantities, like length. For instance, if they've installed only 78 feet, we'd only pay 78 on the next pay request, even though we have 78.
Well, I'm not so concerned about the rest of that. I'm just wondering why we're paying them $1,400 for something they're already there for.
I can find out about the timing of that. I'll make sure it's justified and get back to you.
I say, because they, yeah, they came back and, I mean, it took them forever to come do the seeding and everything. I mean, they were still on site working.
Yeah. And I did have a question mark, but it was the same thing, so. As you can see, just with the two change orders, it's always been my pet peeve. Change orders are something I don't like seeing in any project. But with this one on that storm sewer, it was an unknown factor. So, then, you know, but what's the council's wishes? Do you want to approve the change order or until, or do you want to table it until the next meeting, until we get clarification why that $1,400 is on there?
Well, the work has already been done. So, obviously, we have to pay for the pieces and parts. But I think I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the change orders, including lines two through six, and then have an ability to discuss the line item one.
Yeah.
Table it is reasonable, I think.
I think if we, yeah, by tabling it, then we're not having another paper mill, you know, type of thing. But we do have a motion on the table now, so I do need...
Totally fine.
Unless you want to rescind it.
I can rescind.
Okay. Had a motion, and it's been rescinded. What's the council's wishes?
I'll make a motion that we table this change order until the January 19th meeting, subject to clarification on the mobilization.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Shallen. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against.
Thanks, council.
7H, Approve Removal of Probationary Period for Klein.
Ambulance Director Kathy Truford has requested that the city council release Casey Klein from probationary status with the ambulance department. Klein has had favorable reviews and exceeded the patient contacts required in addition to taking active call and being available for backup on a regular basis. And he works as a driver and a first responder. And so, what we're doing too is just to approve the removal of Casey Klein from probational status effective January 5th.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the removal of Casey Klein from probationary status?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Shallen. Second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. 7I, Approve Application for Permit for Ice Oval Races.
The city has received an application from VSCA LLC for a permit to place structures on the water, which is race sleds, trailers, trucks, ATVs, et cetera, for ice oval races to be held on January 22nd, 2022. The permit allows for installation on the 21st and removal on the 23rd. The permit is issued by the county sheriff, but is, requires a city recommendation. So, the permit also holds the city harmless for actions at the event. So, what we're doing is recommending approval of the permit for having the ice oval races on January 22nd.
Comments, questions? Do I have a motion to approve the application for permit?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, board openings.
We do have some board openings that remain unfilled. We have re-advertised those, one for the HRA, one for the Park Board, one for the CBB, and one for the Senior Center. So, if anybody is interested in serving on any of those boards or anybody you know that might be interested or would be an asset to those boards, please have them get in touch with us here at City Hall.
Questions, comments? Okay. We have no new business. Brings us to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of $888,497.25. Paid claims as of December 31st of $39,446.74 for a total of $927,943.99. We have Resolution Number 2022-06, accepting contributions of $133.39 from the Men's Card Pilling Group to be allocated to the Senior Center, $107,000 from the Fire Relief Association to be allocated to the Fire Department, $100 from Jeanette and Vern Pfeffer for, to be allocated to the Police Department, $5,244 from Great River Federal Credit Union to be allocated to the ambulance department, which was three laptops, $1,500 from Community Connections of Sock Center to be allocated towards street lighting, $6,000 from the Sock Center Conservation Club for the Park Department, which was for the day doc, and $19,000 from the Sock Center Conservation Club to be allocated to the Park Department for Conservation Park. And on behalf of the city and the city council, I want to thank those groups for their donations. We have gambling application for exempt permit request from Center Matt Youth Wrestling Club for a raffle on March 17th, 2022 at Sock Center Public School. Is there any questions about the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.